I'm going to call this open. We welcome everyone here tonight. This is for the sole purpose of going over the reserve study. And we have Father Daughter Reserve Studies LLC with us tonight. That's Bill and Barbie? Bill, is that okay with you?
Sure.
Excellent. I'll never remember it, even though I got the card in front of me. We're going to let you start out with what you've done so far. And from now, we'll go into questions and answers and everything else. Can you hear me? If anybody can understand what I'm saying, hopefully. What we did is, we've been working on the last few months, evaluating all the assets that the association owns. For the purpose of putting together financial projections, budgets, actually a 30-year budget for replacing, maintaining the assets that the association has. And so this is the first draft of the report. There's actually three reports. One is for the master association. And then there are two benefit of villages of Lakeview and Stone Creek. Those are separate reports. This is the master report. And to kind of give you an overview of what the report is, let me go to the, to kind of the index of the report, first of all. Part one of the report is basic information about reserve studies, how they're done, what's included, the different funding options that are included in reserve studies, depending on what the needs of the community are. The second part deals specifically with your community. And we have, you know, funding summaries to give you a 30-year projection of the status of the reserve fund based on the cost that we've assigned to various components. We then show how those costs are distributed. And then there's detail, when you see the detailed reports and detail index, you'll notice that the detailed report starts on page 217 and ends on 2126. So there's just a huge volume of information. Every asset or component, however you want to look at it, that is included in the reserve projections. Background information on each one of those is included in that detailed report. Those are the basis of the expenses that are incorporated into the report. And then at the end, you'll see the expenditure detail, which details out the expenses on a year ba- every year basis. And on the back, the very back one is the spreadsheet that shows the expenses for each of the components. I think, in my opinion, that spreadsheet is probably one of the best documents to go to if you want to see how expenses are straight over 30 years. So with that, let me back up. And let me just work. This is part one. No, it's gone. This is the part one, and this is pretty standard information. And lost, okay, here I am. So let me up page over this. This is good reading if you want to learn about reserve studies. And then this starts out, this is kind of the summary. This is if you want to go to the bottom line and really see what the fund is really like. This is a summary of the reserve fund based upon the cost that we projected and your funding input for the reserve fund. I'll tell you that there's something, another element to the report that is used as to gauge to how well your fund is funded. And that's something called fully funded reserves, as you'll see in the second to the right column. Full funding reserves identifies the amount of money that you should have in your fund to be 100% funded. That basically is a projection of how much money is needed when a particular component comes due to be replaced or maintained. So if you're looking at funding a reserve study, that is the basis from which you want to gauge how your fund is, how your reserve fund is doing.
So, Bill, can you do me a favor?
Sure.
When you switch pages, do you mind just, just, um, take the page?
Okay, okay. We're on 22, page 2.2. This is a summary of your reserve fund based on your current beginning balance, which is 5,235,990. And an annual reserve funding that you currently have of $856,000 per year. You know, this information comes from the association. It is not something that we generate. But that is the starting point. And then on the next column over, in the annual interest, what the report does is it computes the interest earned from your reserve balance. And the next column is annual expenditures. That is the total of all the projected expenses for that particular year. And there are, you know, multiple components that go in and make up those expenses. And then when we get back to the spreadsheet, you'll see those totals will appear on the spreadsheet. And then based on, you know, your annual contribution, your earned interest and your expenditures, it then provides what your projected ending balance is in the reserve fund for that year. So for 2020, that ending reserve balance is as of the end of the year, not the beginning. And then it also computes the fully funded reserve, which in 2020 is the 4.4 million. And it computes a percent funded. So what this really says is in 2020, your reserve fund is at a 78% of the fully funded requirement. Now, there's no stated, there's no law or regulation anything that identifies what that percent funded should be. It is strictly a, an association determination. We calculate it. And then the association has to evaluate whether or not, or what percent their target is for the reserve fund. This analysis here, this spreadsheet here, simply shows what happens to the reserve fund if the reserve contribution remains at $856,000 per year. And as you can see, as you get down, the fully funded percent continues to decrease and actually goes negative. And the fund actually runs out of money in 2035. So obviously, that doesn't work. So what we do next is, um, going on to my next page if I can get it going. There it is. What we do then is we look at-
Page 2.3.
Yeah, 2.3, sorry. What we then do is look at an alternate funding program or model for the association. And our goal, stated goal here is, as was given to us by the association, that they would likely be at 70% fully funded. And we then, based on your same beginning balance, we then alter the annual contributions required for the fund to remain at 70% or higher. You'll see a few years in here where you're, you know, a couple percentage below 70 or, you know, some over 70, but your target is 70%. So you're going to have this up and down movement depending on the expenses that are occurring each year. So this is an alternate funding program that we present in the report based upon what the goals are provided by the association. Okay. That's kind of an overview of that. That's kind of like a bottom line, so to speak. Now, what I need to do is, um-
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On these pages here, what, what do you mean by current cost? I don't understand what that means.
Current cost is the current cost of all the components that are included in that the association owns. That's the current cost of it. I wouldn't really zoom in too much on those.
That doesn't really have much to do with it.
No. I mean, it's a good number to see, but it's, you know.
Okay, yeah, because I wasn't figuring that one out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. See if you can take the operative in the spreadsheet.
Oh, boy.
That's going to be hard to do. Um.
Want to go to the spreadsheet?
These are the sheets that, you know, she's paid you through. These are the sheets that show every component that's included in the study. And there's detail in here, but it would take, you know, forever for us to go through and look at each one of those individually. What I really wanted to do is get to the, to the spreadsheet so you can get an overview of how the expenses are occurring and for what components.
Mark, what's that column in the report? The annual expenditure detail, that?
No.
Keep going, you want to go all the way to the spreadsheet?
Go through, the spreadsheet is way in the back.
Yep, that's what you want to go through.
That's where, that's where we're trying to get to.
I was hoping there was a scroll down.
Certainly not, it may be.
Yes. There was one.
2-165.
Yes.
Is that where it starts or 10 minutes? You got a way to tell? You're not making me very happy.
Say it again, 10 points number 5.
1-165.
We're getting close.
There we go. Okay, so this is the spreadsheet that shows the expenses over for the next 30 years, beginning in 2020. Our report starts, all our projections are based on January 1, 2020 start. So this does a 30-year projection of all the expenses that are included in our study. And we break the expenses down into groups. The groups are typically identified by, by area. You can see it just says association administration and then association maintenance. And if you go to the next, you have to go to several sheets over. Wait a minute, back up, I'm sorry. I was wrong. And then I'm on 2-166 now. We get into grounds, which talks about, you know, all of irrigation and backflow preventers and drainage and those kinds of things. Go one more over.
1-67.
1-67, there's a continuation of the grounds. Plus, we now look at each of the rec sites individually. And everything that is included in the rec site is identified on the spreadsheet as a component. Now, just to reiterate, every line I'm using there, and we're on 1-68 now, in the top, if you look at any one of those items, there is a corresponding sheet, a component sheet in the report that gives some background information on that item.
So he's talking about in the detail area of the report?
Yeah.
Uh, no, not now.
So what, if you're looking for an overview of where the money is kind of being spent or allocated, I think the spreadsheet gives you the best overview of that. Because you can, you can see where it's coming from and in what years those expenses are anticipated to be-
Reoccurring.
Reoccurring. Now, I mean, as an example, what we do when we, when we set up a component that has a reoccurring expense. And let's look at, let's pick an item here. There's one down here called pool heaters. And the item is pool heaters and YAF stands for-
Indigo Sky.
Indigo Sky rec replace. So we're projecting that pool heaters and rec center have to be replaced in 2020. And then they have a useful life of four years. That's what the association is using for that. So you'll see an expense for that item every four years for the next 30 years. Right. Let me ask you a question real quick. I'm a little slow and I need some help.
No worries.
If, if we say, if we project it, some has to be replaced in 2020. We don't spend any money on it because it's in great shape.
Right.
Moves off to the side. Obviously, our numbers will go up because we're not spending the money, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Thank you.
I think the really important thing to understand about this too is that it's, it's a roadmap, you know, a microphone.
Thank you for reminding me. So it's, it's a roadmap for the, for the community. So I know that sometimes people will get hung up on, well, we were supposed to do that in 2017. If it doesn't need to be done, we're not going to do it in 2017. So yes, the funds are still there and then, you know, used as needed.
Yes, I might have been kind of expand on that point, please. We, we're often asked, how often should you update a reserve study? And for community or size, I would certainly recommend one, you know, every year, maybe every other year. Because as you're getting into some of these things, you'll find out that some of your expenses will get deferred, some of them they get advanced. So we can incorporate those changes. And so you now have a better idea of what your current situation is. And, you know, as Robin said, if it doesn't need to be replaced, you don't do it. Just because it's in the reserve study. And this is not a maintenance plan. This is a budget. So keep that in mind.
So say if, if something is scheduled for one year, but you don't need it, you just kind of keep that down the road ways, you know? And if next year it still doesn't need it, but then two years away it does need it, then?
Yes, that's right. And then when you do an update, if something like that occurs when you do an update, then you move those changes. And then also, that also changes your future expenses because, you know, you won't have to replace the, the next one as quick. So that's why it's important to keep it.
Right. And as you saw on that, on that first sheet that he showed you, there's a fluctuation that happens. So you're looking at what a reserve fund, the reason why it's healthy or perceived to be healthy at 70-plus percent is because of fluctuations. Okay, so like he said, the pool heater doesn't go in four years, it takes six years. But the following time, it took four years. You know, so this, this fund fluctuates with it. And if you don't have enough funding, as you have the negatives that are coming up eventually.
Right.
And you don't end up going into that public, which is why you have this going on and budgeting. So that fund will roll and it'll actually continue to roll as it, as it moves on. So yes, there is monies that transfer forward. There's also monies that come out unexpectedly.
Right.
And it's why you need this, this, this wave that happens. And that's why if you're over your 70%, at least you have 70% of almost all of your components funded. You know, so a lot, you might have a smaller community that would be funding at 100%. And that makes sense for a smaller community because they don't have the ability that you guys have to be able to roll that funding heavily. So you'll see this as it changes a little bit in that aspect.
Let me back up just a second if you can to the ground. Yeah.
Beginning?
No, ready.
Back to page 2-167.
Yeah. And this is an example of how you, we project things being done in phases, if you will. A good example there is walls and fences painting. You know, we have kind of divided the community into groups of, um, five groups, six groups. Five groups. Have to get them because we look at different ones. And so we're painting each one of those groups every five years. So now you're getting on a repetitive kind of thing to, you know, be able to keep your assets in good condition.
Now that you have a spreadsheet, you can actually see when things will be coming out. So you'll see if the walls were painted in 2020, if group A's were painted. And the actual price comes in at 267,999. Now you can actually use that as your actions going forward. So a lot of this becomes even more accurate year after year after year as things go into this spreadsheet. So it actually helps in regards to that too.
The other thing I would, I probably should have mentioned earlier, but in, in our projections, we do take into account, or we do project inflation in our costs. We use a 3% inflation factor, which is higher than, you know, consumer price index because these are not consumer items, these are construction items. So any adjustment in those numbers, you know, can be made every time you update a report. That's easily done. It also includes, I think we have this on what, 1% earnings on the interest? On the, is that what we used in, I can't remember.
I'm not going all the way back.
Your earned interest, I think, 1%.
Pretty conservative.
Right. And then also in the report, there is a, a 3% contingency that is used when computing full funding and those kinds. We're not adding contingency on contingency. So contingency is used one year, then the cost are recomputed, then the contingency is added again. So I had that question from somebody, said, well, you're, you know, you're adding contingency on contingency on contingency for 30 years, it's a big number. Well, it really doesn't work that way, so.
Well, so he'll wait a month. Not the smartest, but.
What other, and I'm not sure exactly what other items or discussions or detail you want to get into. Maybe questions at this point will lead us somewhere, okay? Tim, let me start with you then.
Rather than questions, I have a couple, couple of points for the board.
Okay.
First of all, if you go to, uh, page 2-3.
Hold back to the beginning, look at the beginning.
The beginning balance for the reserve, you know, this is 5.2 million dollars. And that includes what is in our current reserve plus the capital improvement fund because of the fact that this reserve is one of the board's requests for us to be, do what we need to do first, okay? So under that philosophy, I said, we're not going to do any improvements. So we're going to, we need to take that capital improvement money and we need to have a resolution to move that into the reserve to keep this thing in shape.
Right.
So maybe the next board meeting, we can, we can do that.
Okay.
And I think that would be one item.
But that, that amount now includes the capital improvement?
The 5-2 includes the capital improvement. Yeah, yes, includes the capital improvement. Because again, the last board meeting, we, as a board said, we don't want to do any capital improvements until we fix before we improve. So this is based on a fix before we improve approach. The other thing to, to think about and we need to make a decision on is there isn't, I don't know if you want to talk about that separately. There's an alternate plan. There's two plans here.
Okay.
The master. Plan one is basically, I'll call it business as usual, which is the way, we just take what we have now and move out and do it, okay?
Right.
The alternative plan says that we in fact incorporate the master plan. So that in fact, we are looking into the future to say that, you know, we want to do these amenities and let's fund for these amenities.
You have that in your, in your paper?
Yeah, there's two different packages.
Right.
So the question from the board really, I think, needs to be, or it has to be, which of the two alternatives do we want to pursue?
Right.
In terms of the master plan project? Do we want to, in fact, at least replace one? We know the master plan isn't perfect, but it's a placeholder, okay? It has in it everything that the community has said they want. So we're probably not going to do everything. But at least you then begin to fund towards those kinds of future projects. And then every year, you make a decision, do I want to do it? Don't know. The other thing that's, that's in the alternative on the master plan is we're not doing anything until we've done the major fixes. So we do the majors, which is really the wall, the wall stuff. We do that first before we start on anything towards the master plan. So we've got three or four, I guess, three years before we start. It's like three years where we can start any of the master plan activities. So clearly, you've had chances to think about it. So that's, again, something for the board.
Do you want to give them, like, the numbers, the difference in it?
Do you want me to, what do you put those up?
Uh, well, that's, that's up to you. This is a really easy, it would be 150, 87 as a unit, an annual, annual contribution versus including the master plan is, what's that number about?
155, 10.
Yeah, so five dollars and change.
Yeah. Yeah, it, 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 one of the things we have to look at as we, as the master plan develops is the budget impact in really future years. Probably five or six years out is where you're going to have to look at. What happens is because of the need to increase the reserve by a bigger percent than we probably would need to increase the operating budget, the reserve is actually going to become a bigger piece of the overall operating budget. It's just like the government. So over time, you have to look at and manage your operating budget pretty carefully. But because if we do decide to look at the master plan approach, the benefit of that is we've put everything in there. So operating should just be-
Operating.
Real operating, I think. Hopefully, there's no more surprises. So it should be just the pure operating stuff, which we hopefully can control to inflation or less, you know? That's some, some important. Again, if, once, if we get into the master, um, plan one, one of my questions would be, can we, after like 2032, you keep the, the funding flat? Can you actually reduce it? Is there a problem in reducing it down to a 100%?
You can reduce it. The reason I did change that and try to reduce the funding down to get you back to 70% because what happens once you do your master plan improvements, you're adding some things that then will have some reserve obligations. So in a, in a further, longer term analysis, you need to try to incorporate a requirement for those reserves. And without knowing really the guts, so to speak, of some of the items, it's hard to punch in some reserves. So, but that would be the follow-on to that, that analysis. It's not going to, I don't think it'd have a great impact, but it will have some. Now, if we want to put those up, we can.
Oh, okay. Either way.
Anything else, Tim?
That, that was my basic, for this one, is you have to get it together once I have it.
I'm going to bounce around a little bit and then we're going to do that round.
Um, I just have an addition from Trevor today when we were talking on page 2-165, the John Deere.
I'll wait back there.
He's saying it's closer to 25 to 30, so I think we could.
On, on what?
Um, the John Deere mower.
The golf mower.
Oh, yeah, we were really low on that, that number.
So it should be what, 25 to 30?
Auto replace.
A lot more?
Yes.
Yeah. This is a golf, these are expensive, you know?
Yeah.
The one we got was, we just took it, bought it from the Gulf Globe. It was a used one.
And how long have we had that one?
Since the, um-
Since, oh, okay.
So we got it, it's at 200.
We're nursing it along right now. Kat, she's fixing it over there. A nurse model, he's making it work. That's, I think that's the only change that we could buy out.
Okay.
What number shall we put in there, board, just, you know?
If you're saying 25 to 30, you got 30.
30.
30, 30, it's not going to make a difference. 30, it's not going to make a big difference, is it?
No.
Just so he knows what he's putting in.
And that's for a new one, not a new one, correct?
Correct.
And the other thing in the reserve study that's really a big add over the world is a coping. Equipment that the association should have that is on that page, is on that 2-165, air compressors, air sprayers that right now are being either rented or individually.
They bring their own.
Their own stuff.
Yeah. I didn't know that they were doing that. I just found out recently.
So the stuff that says new?
Yes.
Is things that?
They're Mark's personal.
So, so he's been using his personal stuff?
He's been kind.
Actually, a lot of these items on, so you know, a lot of these items, he has been using his own. And so I had him list them and it really needs to be, you know, owned by the association.
Now, I do have a question on this Klonex box. That is a new one we have. Yeah, I'm actually, no, this was placed in there as a possibility of the second one for storage. Yes, we are really pressed for.
So we've got, we've got, we've got our two containers that we do have running old. Yes. And of course, if you buy all this new stuff here.
I was just going to say.
Yes.
We're buying all this stuff, so we're going to have to have a place to put it.
However, my question is, is because, you know, I understand the replace things and everything. And I can understand, you know, he's using his personal tools, you know, to do stuff now. But because they're new, we're not replacing or repairing, which is what I always understood, we actually are funds to be, you know, repaired, replaced.
It is actually replacing. Some of the ones that he's talking about that he uses, you're right, maybe that needs. But there are some items on here that we have to probably highlight that we have, but they need to be updated. Some of them are not working at all.
Sandy, when you're asking on the update, when we do the next update, will the gentleman that says new, the next time it would say replace? Is that what it is?
She's asking these ones that are new, the Sanderson stuff?
We don't have them now.
Do we want to include them as, as a part of? They will become a part of it for replacement, or we need that?
Right.
So if we, or operating?
Because I would think those would have to come out of operating in the initial stage as to their purchasing and brand.
But it, it really doesn't matter. I mean, it's money, either, it's money. The money is the same whether it's operating or reserve. The benefit for.
The thing of it is, is that the amount of that money would compensate for the change in the gator.
Well, but you're still going to spend the money. So it means in next year's budget, we would then have to put a line item in the next year's budget that says, "New, new hairsprayer." So it's just going from one, one pocket, operating pocket to the other. It's the same, same amount of money.
Yeah, I don't understand.
Huh? Whatever.
Okay.
Okay, it says in, let me try. In 2020, it says we're going to purchase a new airless, buy new a circuit tracer for $1,000. If we take it out of the reserve, it then has to go into the, if we're going to get that, it goes into the operating budget. So that's still $1,000 that we're going to have to spend in 2020.
But rather than it, to me, it just seems like it should come out initially from the operating budget. And then it becomes, you know, a part of the maintenance tools.
Were you going for replacement?
Oh, no, I understand. Spend from the, you know, from, from that day forward instead of, okay, like where you see the, let's see, new airless sprayer for $1,000. And then in 2026, of course, it's going to, you know, the inflation is going to bring it up to replace it to $1,194. You, you would basically just be moving them over one year.
Yeah, but if, if we don't have it in here now at $1,000 or if we don't have it in here in this reserve study, it won't show up in 2024. These, yeah.
I still don't understand.
So you're saying you want to take the things out of 2020, move them to operating, but keep them in the replacement.
Yeah, you have to keep them, yeah.
So yes, we're still spending the money, it's just showing it in a different spot for.
Right, well, we can take the actual number out of 2020 and we can leave it as a replace and, and put that in the year. So if on all these new items, the board would prefer that they're purchased from operating, Bill would just remove that dollar amount from 2020. It still needs to stay.
We would start as like, basically going against on being a new item and on the replacement date rather than taking it from.
At first, I think it's adding confusion. It's adding complications for no reason because then Robin's got to go into the operating budget and put all this stuff in the operating budget. I understand your, your, your philosophy and I don't have an issue with the philosophy. But again, the other intent of a reserve study is, is not just replace, it's also items that you need, capital improvement items that you need. These are new capital improvement items that we need. And that's the other definition of what goes into the reserve study. It's not just replacing what you have today. It's also if we now, just like the walls, we.
Replace, replace or repair.
Yeah, it's just like, it's just like the wall, yeah, replace, reflect, or, or.
That's what, that's what we're charged to do is to repair and replace the items in our community.
That's what I said.
So, and that's, and to me, that's what, I mean, from what I've read here and.
Well, so replace is kind of the same as new, right? I mean, when you get down to it, it's just because Mark's using his own personal stuff or replacing Mark's equipment with.
We are like.
Some of the stuff I don't quite understand. Do we really, really use those things? Do we really, really do?
Everything he uses, but he has here.
Yep.
So Bill, just so I, I make sure, for instance, well, I think if we keep it clean, if we were to say the Klonex box new, we remove that to operating, the Klonex box would stay listed here and then we put the dollar amount in the year for replacement.
Yeah, it would actually show up and then replace here as opposed to the purchase it. Okay, having said that, I'll go to you.
Okay, so my question along these lines on this same page is, I'd like to see it say a second truck for the office that's been needed for by law, for the maintenance team.
Add, add that?
Yep.
Why?
Because it's needed. So we have to replace the current truck all the way over in 2028.
But have the other additional?
Yeah, but I'd like to see an additional in 2020.
On the GMC?
Yeah, an additional, it doesn't matter what brand, but it, an additional truck because they need more than one full-size truck for the whole maintenance team.
But they have a trailer in and.
I'm not going to argue with you, this is what I'm asking for.
Well, I didn't ask you to argue with me.
You're arguing with me. I'm just asking, I'm just asking for this to be added on there as a consideration.
For consideration, considerations, we will get into that shortly though.
Okay.
Okay? Goni, do you have anything?
Um, no. No, I don't, not right now.
This is Dana.
My question, kind of along the same lines as Sandy, I noticed that we have tree trimming in here in the reserve study. Just asking why? In my mind, that's something that is done systematically and routinely. So isn't that something that should be in the operating rather than in the reserve? I don't know.
Well, I think we should let Bill talk to this. I, I normally know tree trimming to be out of operating, but in that he does these too, he can maybe express what he sees.
We, we actually, for reserve studies that we do for other communities, some include it, some don't. It's just a preference of how they want to operate. A lot of them like to see it in the reserve because in, within a reserve study, if you happen to have a need to spend a little bit more for tree trimming, you have the ability to do that in the reserve more than you do in the operating. You can handle some up and downs in the reserve that you can handle. That's the way other associations look at it, but not everybody does it differently.
Yeah, the, again, historically, it's been in both. Okay, Johnson Ranches, it's been in both. It's been in operating and it's been in reserve. The, the logic for putting it in the reserve was because you're looking at it, the combination, the combination of like in, in its phases and the amount of money are different in each phase. So if you divide it, because we're doing like essentially a third of the money each year, you're getting, going to get a more equal distribution across the, the funding rather than going up and down on the operating. One year you'll have $143,000 and the next year you'll only have $92,000. This is where you have a more consistent look in the reserves. That, that was the other logic for putting it in there, but it can go either way.
Like you said before, we're still spending the money, it's just coming out of a different budget. I guess I'm just looking at it more of like it's something we know needs to be done. We know we're doing it routinely and, and regularly. So to me, that's something that would be in operating rather than reserve. We, we know what's happening. We know we don't have X amount of years to wait, we have to do it. So it's more like a maintenance thing to me. That one.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
No.
You're good? Uh, Tim, anything else?
You're good.
That's it for this one. Okay. Allison?
That was my other question.
That's good. Uh, Goni?
No.
Tim? Are you good for now? Do you have more questions? Either way, you're good.
No, no, I'm good now.
Okay. Anything else you have for the greater order on this, as it stands right now? Uh, now on this, do you want to look at the other studies as well?
Yes.
And just one, one other point. If you want to give a good summary of all of the items that are included in the report, this is not the beginning page, it's the, it's the schedule called Asset Summary Report. It's a one-line schedule that includes every component in the report with the maintenance service and all kinds of information in that cell.
Okay, 211.
Yeah, starts on 211.
Difference with that between this and the spreadsheet is the spreadsheet shows you per year when it's actually coming out. See if you can actually see it. And if not, actually, we'll rephrase that when it's programmed to come out protected. It's maintenance obviously functionally, so.
I am definitely looking at this a little. Oh, I wonder if I'm having a moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
They're fine.
So the next one, which one is? This is Lakeview. Lakeview, all right.
Okay.
Go to the Asset Summary Report.
Okay.
I go back, right there.
Oh, no.
Okay. I just wanted to see, just make sure, can I get these two included? Lakeview is, includes only the streets and that benefit of the village. The only thing that the benefit of the village is responsible for making. So we have incorporated in here, incorporated in here. There are three components relative to, to the streets. We have crack seal, milling overlay and surface treatment and crack seal. That would be done the same thing. Now, let's go back to the. Let's go to the summary, funding summary.
Last page, 23.
Right. This reserve fund has a beginning balance of $147,554. The annual contribution is $9,600 per year. The. Go to the next sheet.
I'm in alternate, you want the original?
I want to go.
Oh, yeah, let's go back to the current.
There you go.
Sorry.
Sorry. It's actually 21.
Beginning balance and the, you know, current contribution are the same.
Right.
So what happens is, if I look at the graph, you can see that, you know, the, the reserve fund grows and all of a sudden it drops way down at the point in time when we're scheduling the milling overlay of the streets. So if you go to the next sheet. Yeah, it's on, we're on 3, 2.2 now. 2-2. Okay. This is the current funding summary. If, if you don't change the funding, funding amounts on a annual basis, when you get to $20,4300, it is, if we have an expenditure there of $336,990, that is the projected expense for milling overlay of the streets in Lakeview. And at, and at that point, the fund actually runs out of money.
Right.
Now, go to the alternate, I'll look up the alternate, then I want to come back and talk about the streets again. Okay, this is the same thing, it starts same balance, this is 2.3. Same balance, same contribution, we go to the alternate funding. What happens, what we've done under the alternate funding in order to be able to have sufficient reserves to take care of the street milling overlay when it comes to in 2043, we've had to increase the reserve contribution on an annual basis starting in 2039. And then, as you can see, it, it, the reserve, the full funding percent drops down to 73% in a year that the milling overlay is done, but then continues to grow right back up because you, this major component won't have to be redone again for, hopefully ever if the streets are maintained and preserved. And in talking about the streets, we, when we looked at the streets, the streets have block cracking and I believe this one has a little bit of alligator cracking. But in my opinion, if, if the streets are preserved, if you keep them covered with a surface treatment and the crack seal, I think there's a good chance that that milling overlay can be continued to be pushed out to future years. Asphalt won't wear out, but it will deteriorate if it's not protected. That's, that's the whole idea. But we have incorporated in there a surface treatment, crack seal, I think on a seven-year basis, using the HA5 from Holber, which is, in my opinion, is a very, very good product. So that's, that's kind of the summary of Lakeview. Only the one component, the streets to worry about. Any questions for anybody on the board on that?
The only, the only question I have, if we decide to go with the alternate approach, can we move, because there's a big jump in the 42, 43 time period. There's a big $14,000 in one year in 2042, 43.
Yes.
Which, there's only 50 houses in there, so that's a huge jump. So if, if we decide to go with the alternate one, I would propose that we aim to do the increases a little bit earlier, so we're over 10%.
Yeah.
You know, we're up in 1860 or something, but then we don't. We're not hitting there with a $200 increase in one year or whatever. Whatever $14,000 comes up to divided by 50 almost.
A more gradual approach, which will make the percent more look higher initially. But as you can see, when you actually have to do that milling overlay, it makes a huge difference in the, in the funding. So, yeah, it can be changed actually.
If you can give us some guidance on how much of an increase on annual basis you would like to see, if you can go back and make those adjustments.
Are you thinking of starting in maybe 20?
2030 or something, so I'd see what that would do.
2030?
See if that would do, would work.
Still a big chunk.
Yeah. If we do, um, something like.
I can do a couple of, I can do a couple of, let's try.
Just do a spreadsheet, I would just do a spreadsheet that's, that doesn't put. Just do a spreadsheet, I would just do a spreadsheet that's, that doesn't put, because there's only fifty homes in there. I don't want to hit them with a huge increase.
We can do that.
And that won't change the annual contribution?
No, no, no.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
No, the annual, no, I'm saying, we would change the annual contribution earlier.
Right.
Yeah.
It would remain there until twenty thirty or something.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I wouldn't do the first, I wouldn't, five years, I'd keep it the way it is, and then see what happens, what you could do after five years to kind of absorb some of that bill increase.
I would agree with that. I mean, I know if I was a homeowner in there, I would rather have it spread out over a longer period of time than all of a sudden, whack, here you go, it's an extra, you know, you're doubling that, not moving it each time.
Right.
Right.
Anything else on the board on this, sorry to say? I just, one, one comment relative to that. If you would, you know, look at using the ultimate projection as a target, and we make the revision, but you also have the opportunity, if you update the study in two or three years, and the payment continue to look good, one of your options may be to push the expense back.
Right, so it's just happening in twenty forty-three.
The combination of pushing.
Or twenty forty-seven, whatever it is, just pushing out to.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Which would be helpful too, so starting it too early can affect you also, since that's in the twenty-three range probably.
So, so you're saying, instead of starting that increase earlier, like?
Like in two years?